Begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Are there any changes to the agenda?
We don't have any changes. I just want to make sure everybody sees that we have a regular agenda and a special agenda, and the meetings will run concurrently.
Okay. So on the consent calendar, we have one on the special meeting. Do you want to put that as number?
Five fourteen.
Five fourteen. Okay. Thank you. Okay, we'll do that. And then we'll just, we have a closed session. Okay. Okay, counsel, would you like to accept the agenda as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Counsel-- did you?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Uh, Councilman Ramirez? Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Okay. Next, we have awards, presentation, appointments, and proclamations. We have none. Citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item not within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to lectern, identify themselves, and use their microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes. In accordance with state open meeting laws, no action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for a follow-up report. Also, citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 P.M. on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the city council and included in the record. However, they will not be read. Is there anybody that would like to come to the audience? Okay, sir, could you come and present your name and?
Hi, my name is Lawrence Williamson.
Pardon me, again?
Lawrence Williamson?
Okay.
Sorry, Lawrence Williamson. Right, so the reason why I'm here is I'm interested in building a library, a very small library. It's called a little free library, actually, something that would be on my front lawn. And I wanted to make sure that if there are permits that need to be pulled, any ordinances or statutes that I need to know about. I've already contacted someone from the city. I don't recall who it was. I'm not sure if it was you, sir, but anyway. Yes, 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 sorry. Right, there you go, sorry. I just want to make sure everything is in line, because I want to do it, obviously, properly and legally. That's basically it.
Okay, yeah, we can't respond tonight.
Yeah, no, I recognize that. You just read that. You just said that. I get it.
But we'll let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for coming forward. Is there anybody else that'd like to address the audience? Sean? I mean, Scott? I hit the mic and it threw me off.
Scott Netherton, Klinga Chamber of Commerce. Bear with me, I wrote it, because I got a lot of numbers. I don't want to mess something up for you. Before I get started, I want to say I had the privilege to go Tuesday for the flag ceremony that they had at the Elks Lodge. I don't know if you had a chance to drive by and see that new arrangement they put up with the flags.
Looks nice.
It's very, very nice. If you haven't, I suggest you go by. We had an incredible 2022 Derby this year, and I was honored to be a part of it. This year, we set a lot of records, and the process brought back a little nostalgia while trying to stay true to the history of the event. Execution wasn't always perfect, but there was certainly an incredible amount of hard work that went into it, and I was proud of the team that I had that stood behind me in it. This year, we saw the return of some old classics, like the bed races, the adult trike races, and the huskows, well, some of the hometown traditions, like the horn-toed races, Big Fred softball tournament, pancake breakfast, and water fights put on by our local firefighters association. Our Memorial Day parade this year consisted of eighty-one entries, and while I have no idea how many spectators there actually were, I will say, as I walked up and down beside the parade, it reminded me of when I was a kid. To get some of the numbers you might be interested in, these are actually from the Butler Amusement Settlement. We, our royalty court and our local business partners sent amazing job pre-selling vouchers, setting an all-time record sales of three thousand two forty-five. This does not include the Save Mart. Those numbers are only from royalty court, Chamber Office, Thrift Store, Pink Parlor, We Town, Learning Center, Guzman Tires, Plants and Things, and the Jiffy Store. Three thousand two forty-five. The previous record was two thousand nineteen with two thousand five hundred eighty-two. Save Mart also set an all-time high this year. According to Butler records, the previous record was two thousand sixteen with nine hundred and twelve vouchers. This year, they sold one thousand seven hundred and eighteen. So total pre-sale for 2022 was four thousand nine hundred and sixty-three. On-site sales for Butler, at the Butler ticket booth, was another three thousand seven sixty-four, for a total count for the eighty-fifth annual Horn Toad Derby of eight thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven risk bands. Lot of people. How much is that in dollars and cents? According to Butler Amusement's Horn Toad Derby has only ever broken the one hundred and fifty thousand revenue mark twice. In two thousand sixteen, it hit one hundred and fifty-two thousand, and twenty twenty-one, it hit one hundred and fifty-five. We're incredibly proud to announce this year, our total came in at two hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and seventy-four. What this means for Klinga moving forward is that Butler determines what rides and what resources they allocate to each event based on the value of that event. In the past twenty years, Klinga's only been in the mid-one-twenty-fives, and like I said, only topped one hundred and fifty on two occasions. According to Andrea, the fact Klinga has now become a quarter of a million-dollar fair means big things going forward. Our royalty court consisted of Little Miss Abriela Rosales, Little Mr. Joaquin Pimentel, Princess Josephine Vega, Prince Joseph Vargas, our queen Mariska Nylees, and the king was Juan Gonzalez. Our eighty-fifth annual Horn Toad Race grand champion was sponsored by Tanya Stevens of Mid-State Realty, and we had a lot of incredible performances on both stages, including a lot of local and out-of-town talent. Now, it all was sunshine and roses, as there were some safety issues that did come up. And I want to thank Chief Garza, Commander Sean, as well as every agency that was here helping us out this, that weekend, to help keep everyone as safe as possible. We had a debrief yesterday with the police department, city, the rec. department, and a lot of good ideas, suggestions came out of that, and they will be addressed, and steps will be taken next year to assure that it's the safest and most fun event the Chamber can provide for our community. What comes next for Chamber? Monday is our Chamber Appreciation Dinner, where we say thank you to all of our local businesses and citizens that have become a part of the Chamber of Commerce. After that, it's back to doing our job, supporting, promoting local businesses, and being the informational hub for the community. We have a lot of work to get to where the Chamber Board envisions us to be, but we'll get there. And I just want to say thank you to the city council, Marissa, Sean, everybody, your staff, your public works. They go above and beyond for every crazy idea I throw out there for them, and they come through every time. And Klinga is blessed to have you all, and I just want to thank you. Any questions you have for me?
Sean, I mean, Nate and we appreciate what you do. I got Sean on my mind. I'm sorry about that.
Okay, we don't want to trade places.
Yeah. We really appreciate what you do for this city.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that'd like to address the board? Okay, seeing none, we go to item number four, which is public hearings. This is a public hearing to discuss and approve the submittal of a 2022 Community Development Block Grant application, a CBD, CBBG approval of housing and housing rehab guidelines, and the CDBGCV1 grant closeout. Marissa?
Thank you. So the recommendation is to open the public hearing to accept comments on the city's proposed submittal of an application to apply for the 2022 State Community Development Block Grant Notice of Funding Availability and Adopt Resolution 4098 approving the submittal of a 2022 CDBG application, Adopt Resolution 4099 adopting the housing rehabilitation guidelines and the homebuyer acquisition with or without rehabilitation guidelines, and accept the grant closeout with the California Department of Housing and Community Development. We do have self-help here. If the council's okay, it would be great to allow them to come up and speak, and then you can open the public hearing for the public.
Okay. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Susan Long. I'm with Self-Help Enterprises. Been here before, but it's been a long time, so it's nice to see everybody in person again. So we are here this evening to discuss the city's application for CDBG funds. The application was released in April. The notice was put in the paper in June fourth in the Hanford Sentinel notifying the public of your opportunity to apply for Community Development Block Grant Funds. Those opportunities revolve around economic development, planning, housing rehab, homebuyer assistance, and public services are the opportunities available under this current NOFA. As of right now, the city has chosen to apply for housing rehab and homebuyer assistance programs, and so that's what we're presenting to you this evening. We have also provided you with program guidelines associated with both of those programs, housing rehab and homebuyer assistance, which we're asking you to adopt. The programs offer deferred payment loans at zero percent interest to low-income households, either owner-occupied for housing rehabilitation, or first-time homebuyers if they are seeking The final topic is the closeout of the CDBGCV1 contract that the city received under the coronavirus urgent need type of activity for subsistence payments, which provided mortgage and utility assistance to your residents. We were able to provide assistance to forty-seven households here in Klinga. We expended the full amount of the grant, which was eighty-six thousand three forty-three, plus the city's CDBG program income, which was over sixty-five thousand dollars as well. We will not be disencumbering any funds, because we spent every penny. And we are now, the grant expired May seventh, so we need to go through this process to formally close it out, and we'll submit the final report to HCD. The applications that we are applying for, for rehab and homebuyer, are five hundred thousand apiece for a total of one million dollars. So five hundred for rehab, five hundred for homebuyer assistance. And we do encourage citizens to make comments, and they can do that in writing or in person. And I can answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions from counsel? Okay, no questions from counsel. We'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. And would you mind, if anybody had any questions, would you mind answering them? Okay. Anybody in the audience like to? Okay, we're going to open the public hearing first. And so if anybody would like to say anything about this project, this time is now. Okay, seeing none. Could you, could you go over the, like, a couple of the guidelines on how much they could make, or how much, you know, just on that part, so people would know just?
Sure. So eligibility is based on household income and the size of your household and the income that you have for that size of household. These income limits are changed annually by HUD and then sent down to the state. So we have to, they change, do change annually. Our actual current guidelines that I have for you this evening are from 2021, because the 2022 have not been released yet. But to give you an idea, a household of three could not make more than fifty thousand two hundred dollars a year. A household of four would be fifty-five, seven fifty. Under the CDBG program, there is no limit as far as value of property or purchase price. The amount of assistance provided under your guidelines provides, you can provide up to forty-nine percent of a purchase price. So if they needed, they're purchasing a two-hundred-thousand-dollar home, and they truly only qualified for a hundred and one through the bank or mortgage company, then you could provide that additional ninety-nine thousand dollars to fill the gap and ensure the home is affordable in their payment. Under the rehab program, there is no maximum loan amount. We do everything from minor repairs to reconstructions, and there's no payments. It's zero interest, deferred payment loan.
Are the guide, uh, income guidelines the same?
The income guidelines are exactly the same.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's what I was just wanting to get out there a little bit.
Sure, absolutely.
It helps them, helps them a little bit, too.
And we do have, we do currently have some money with your home program.
Right.
And we are trying to get spent as well. So we are running this program currently. This would just help us continue to do that.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, I'll ask again, is there anybody else that'd like to ask any questions or say anything about the home program? Okay, not seeing any, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And counsel, what would you like to do?
That's what you're looking for, is it, aren't you?
Yes, if you can please adopt the two resolutions and accept the closeout of the grant.
I'll make a motion to approve the two resolutions and adopt the closeout of the grant.
I'll second.
Okay, the motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I vote aye, and thank you very much for your help today.
Thank you.
Okay. You, too. Okay, next, we'll go to the consent calendar. We have fourteen items. Is there anybody that would like to pull anything on the fourteen items?
Number eight.
Number eight?
Number ten.
Number eight and number ten. Okay, on number eight, what would you like to know on that one? That is, direct city manager to coordinate a public workshop with Klinga here on Unified School District to discuss how the city can ensure safety of the schools.
And that's basically due to what's going on in this world we're in. I would like for us to be as prepared as possible. Every entity around here should be ready to react and respond. The PD, the school, the city council, to do whatever it is to ensure that safety, because I don't want to wait and then try to jump on it. We see what's going on, so I don't think we really have a choice, because our schools are open, so it just sets up a bad situation, because we don't have the schools to be fenced in. We don't have responding staff. It would just be our PD force and the, whoever's around. I mean, Fresno won't make it in time. The closest one you'd probably have is the prison, with their squad team or their cert team get activated. But at that time, as we see, things don't, they happen quickly. And I think by us getting on board with the school system, the PD, the fire, just to have a, a plan, God forbid that we don't ever need to have that, but to have that ready, I mean, it's just crazy. And we're not trying to infringe on anybody's rights or anything like that, because that's, we're not saying dump all your guns just to make everything safe. We're not trying to go that route. We just want our schools and our city to be safe, because it doesn't have to be the schools. It could be Save Mart anywhere. People have no conscience on where they go, where they think people are more vulnerable, and it's just, it's getting out of hand. We've been mourning for these children, for these adults. We've been praying for them, and you start to get frustrated, because it just keeps ongoing. I mean, so I think for us being so isolated away from everything and everybody, that we need to come up with a, a, a plan. I mean, some schools have key fobs or fobs where they give teachers, they have smoke coming down from the ceiling, they have doors that automatically lock. Whatever we need to do, any life that we can save is, is, is of value. I mean, it's just getting frustrating. It's like, man, you get tired of hearing these things, and people just aren't ready, and we need to be ready, though.
Okay.
What do you got, Marissa?
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I think, I think we all agree with you on that. We just want to be safe, and we want to be ready.
True, and I don't just want it to be here. I want the public's point of view, their interests, whatever they have to input, because nobody's idea can go unheard. I mean, we need a collective agreement here. We're all in this together, and we all need to be involved in this. I mean, for those that live right across from the school, those that, I mean, can be anywhere, I just think the community needs to be involved in this as well, because we can only do so much without them. We're just, it's not enough. I mean, so we would really love for the community to come out and put their input, volunteers to do whatever needs to be done to try to get our city secured.
I did meet with the superintendent this week, and we briefly talked about that this item was on the agenda, so she thinks it's a great idea for the city to host a workshop, have the community come. She'll come. Some other school district employees may come, and really just express what they think the city can do to help them ensure that the schools are safe. We're probably looking at the third or fourth week of July, if that works for everybody, so I'll send something out to counsel to get a date, and then make sure that we get the information out to the public as best as we can.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, number ten. Authorize the purchase of three electronic messaging boards?
Do you have a question?
Yeah, how much is that third one?
How much is the third one?
Yeah.
Uh, I have to look at the quotes. All the quotes are attached. Hold on.
I think it was eighteen thousand.
Yeah, so the smaller, the minis are eighteen thousand, and the larger ones are about just over a thousand dollars more.
And the first ones that, the first two that we want to go with were the larger ones, right?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we talked about that.
So I say, just what I say, because we have another presentation later on today with retail strategies, and we don't know if we're going to move forward with that or not, so how about we move forward with the two that you already want, or that we already approved, and wait on the third one, bring it back, dependent on what we're going to do with retail strategies, so that way, that helps supplement the amount that we're going to pay them if we do decide to move forward with them. That way, we're having less deficit spending, because I believe all the money from retail strategies is going to come out of, if we decide to move forward with them, is going to come out of the general fund.
Correct. So from that third electronic messaging board sign, that would save about eighteen thousand, but some of, I think it's seven thousand is coming out of enterprise funds, and the rest was ARPA funds.
Yeah, so it's all ARPA funds, so the sixty thousand is ARPA funds. And so the reason for our recommendation for the third was basically, the only difference that puts us over the sixty thousand that was authorized with ARPA was for basically the sales tax of the three message boards, and so the water, sewer, and gas fund can encumber those particular costs, because these message boards are going to be used pretty much citywide. So when we're doing, you know, any kind of water leaks, sewer leaks, any other type, any other type of work, we can, we can allocate that to these enterprise funds as well. So it's about, you know, twenty-five hundred or so, twenty-six hundred dollars per fund additional, but everything else is funded through ARPA, so there's no general fund expense on this particular purchase.
Right.
Right, but I think, to answer your question, so it would save eighteen thousand dollars with that third one. Seven thousand comes from the enterprise funds, which we couldn't allocate to retail strategies, but the remaining eleven thousand could technically, because it would be a general fund expense, but not the full eighteen thousand. could technically because it would be a general fund expense, but not the full eighteen thousand.
I only bring this up because we only have a twenty thousand dollar surplus. So we'd be deficit spending if we decide to move forward with them. So that's what I.
So is retail strategy, is it looking to be paid out of ARPA funds? Is that?
Well, supplemented with the, so with the eleven thousand, so.
With ARPA funds?
Yes.
Okay.
It could be. I think that's what he's saying. It's on the agenda to be funded by the general fund, but he's saying if we save eleven thousand in ARPA funds, it could be allocated towards that, reducing the amount in the general fund.
Makes sense.
Okay, Mary, you have a question?
Mary Jones, District One. I have a question about the security of the signs. I know that the description said that it has better hack-proof software involved with it, but our past experience using these was pretty racy. It, it did make me laugh, but it was easy to hack. The one we used, what was it, last year or something? It's like one, two, three, I could do it. I didn't. Believe me, I I would say something different if I hacked it, something about zombies, but I just was wondering how secure those signs are.
Hmm. I didn't even know.
That was in, that was in, part of the description is that it had better security. But those are just, you know, you just grab a little, little box. Yeah. So I just was asking.
I can honestly tell you, I don't know. Maybe, maybe Larry can hack it, but I, I know I probably wouldn't know how to hack it, but I mean, I
Nothing is hack-proof.
Had problems in the past.
I think there was one, one of the marks got, what they broke a lock. And what they did, they got in and changed what it said.
You guys don't know about that.
But other than that, it's just a lock that you can't cut.
Yeah, they make, they make locks that are uncuttable. They're quite a few hundred dollars each, but they do make them where they're uncuttable.
Well, thank you, Mary. Okay, counsel, do you want to make any any proposals on that, that one?
Do we want to vote on that one separate?
We could do that. You want to vote for all of them and then go separately? Is there anything anybody would like to pull from the audience before we go that way?
If I can make a suggestion, since I did provide alternatives in the staff report, if you wanted to go with alternative two, which is the purchase of the two large boards, then you could probably just approve the consent calendar as one. If that's what you guys were looking to do with, with alternative number one, which is purchasing the two large boards.
Okay.
Okay, so, so should we, should we change that?
It would just be a motion to approve the consent calendar with.
Option two?
Option.
Option one.
Or one?
Alternative one on item ten.
Okay. Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll approve the motion. I'm sorry, I'll approve. I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with number ten being alternate, alternative one.
I'll second that.
It's been motion seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I also vote aye. Okay, we've got item number six, ordinance presentation discussion of potential action items. Presentation of retail strategies and discussion. Direction on potential action regarding approval of professional service agreement to provide consulting services. Matthew Tate.
All right, mayor, counsel, thank you for having me. My name is Matthew Tate. Let me just make sure my clicker's working. Okay. My name is Matthew Tate. I'm the Director of Business Development on the West Coast for Retail Strategies. Retail Strategies is a firm based out of Birmingham, Alabama. I myself grew up in Rockland, California. My wife's from Exeter. Father-in-law lives in Newport, so we've kind of got all of California covered under our roof. I met with, with Marissa and, and Councilman Atkinson at the trade show in Las Vegas. I think we had some issues getting everyone to our networking event, so want to apologize first and foremost for that. The taxi and Uber situation out in Las Vegas was, was awful. And we heard that from a lot of people. Well, we're here to talk about tonight. We are a retail recruitment and a downtown revitalization firm. So we work with cities all over the country to help them understand through data and analytics what is missing in their market. We put a data and analytics packet together, but then we go to shows like Recon or ICSC Las Vegas, the Western Conference Show, the Monterey Show, Retail Live, Scottsdale. We go on behalf of the communities we work with and we go tell their story. So we'll talk a little bit tonight in this presentation about how we do what we do, how it's a little bit different than what, what you guys might have done at the show and how we believe it's, it's kind of adding steroids or just kind of just pushing you guys a little bit further than, than maybe what you were doing. So we've got about ten minutes here and then, and then we'll get into questions, but feel free to stop me if you have any, any questions along the way. So again, I've been doing this for the past ten years. I'm from California. I've been working with cities all over. Any type of retailer out there, but if you don't have the real estate for it, a great example is Topgolf. Topgolf needs fifteen acres, thirteen to fifteen acres. You might want a Topgolf, but if you don't have thirteen to fifteen acres, we're wasting our time talking to them. So what we do is not only do we outreach to the retailers on your behalf, but we also get to know your property owners. We call the property owners in your market. We let them know we're partnering with the city to help backfill their vacancies. And we try and what I call soften the local market. Oftentimes, we start calling and make sure to know Mr. Smith's in here and, you know, and property owner Mr. Smith thinks he's going to get three times the value for his property just because he's got it. Well, when the city goes and talks to Mr. Smith, it, it, of course, the city wants Mr. Smith to lower his price and he's just not interested in doing that. When I go talk to Mr. Smith and I say, Mr. Smith, you've got one acre. This is exactly what XYZ retailer looks for. They want all these site characteristics that you have, but guess what? The last three locations they opened, here's what they paid for it. You're three times that. If you want to make a deal, this is what it's going to take, right? And so it's different coming from us versus coming from the city, for example. So part of what we do is soften the local market. We are retail agnostic as well. There's not a retailer, these are retailers we've done deals with all across the country. But there's not, it's not that if it's a grocer, it's got to be one grocer up here. We leverage data and analytics to identify who is not here that should be, and then we put together that story to go, to go talk to them. These are just, again, examples of retailers we've landed across the country. So why do we exist? We exist for a lot of reasons. I think a majority of you or at least a lot of you in this room went to the ICSC show on, on behalf of the city. I, I was very impressed with everything that Marissa did leading up to the show, marketing the community, getting your guys' name out there. It was truly fantastic. I, I've worked with over three hundred cities. This was really good. Good job. So you guys should be proud of that and, and everyone who put time and effort into that. Questions I would have is how much follow-up have you guys done since the show, right? You have ten other hats to wear. Some of you only wear one. Some of you have to go back and do other jobs, right? My team has already followed up with everyone we've met with at the show. We're working on getting site visits. We're working on getting the tour of the markets that we're in. We're working on finding the property that's the best fit for them based on what they told us at the show, right? So we don't stop to then focus on industrial. We don't stop to then focus on rooftops or, you know, the, the, the housing grants that you're working on. We focus on retail and when you're not even thinking about it, we're still doing it. And that's a big piece of this, right? Retailers, we're at the show, they're excited about it, but when they come home, they want to see the follow-up that you guys talked about and, and see some properties, see some sites, right? So our team keeps on doing that. We believe in everything we do and, and combining the human aspect with the data aspect. So we'll talk about some of the data tonight. I, I've actually run some, some data for you guys to see what we do. The primary reason why we exist is to increase sales tax revenue for you and also improve the quality of life here for your residents. I don't think I really need to spend too much on, time on this slide, but this is a good example. If we were to successfully recruit, we call this the recruitment ladder. As you get to the top of the ladder, assuming one percent annual sales tax back to the city, those, those four or five retailers can, can generate a lot of revenue. All the way at the bottom of the, the ladder, those guys even, they, they generate great revenue as well. They also bring jobs. Now, there's a lot of people that say, well, retail jobs, they're, they're not anything to focus on. Well, that was really two, three years ago. Retail jobs now are actually pretty good-paying jobs and a lot of them are starting jobs. A lot of them allow CEOs from big companies to look at your market because now their kids can pay for their insurance on their car, their car payment, et cetera, right? So you have to have those, those kind of entry-level jobs. Something interesting to note, a few years ago when we were doing this slide, Chick-fil-A was in the bottom rung. Chick-fil-A now, for example, does anywhere from eight to eighteen million dollars a year in revenue. That's through the pandemic, right? Pre-pandemic, they were doing about four million dollars a year and now they're just absolutely killing it. And that's with most of them shutting their, their dining rooms and only being open to the drive-through. Another fun thing about Chick-fil-A is they're switching to a, a triple drive-through model. So going forward, you're going to start seeing Chick-fil-A's with triple drive-throughs, right? So all of these things are reasons you partner with us because now not only do we know that, we can start working with you guys, say, what is, what do your ordinances look like in the city? Are you guys truly business-friendly? Would you allow a triple drive-through for, for a Chick-fil-A? There are cities in California that are saying the double drive-through is causing too much traffic and, and it's a headache, right? And so these are all things that we've got to tackle and we've got to work on. We've got to figure out what incentives you guys offer. And I don't mean cash incentives. I mean time incentives. I mean the ability to do a triple drive-through if needed, right? So all of these things are things we work on with you guys as well. Our approach is, is really broken down into three main steps. It's discover, connect and advance. Cut, I, I cut through all that to say, we want to learn your story. We're the national experts. You're the local experts. We want to learn your story through you guys, through your narrative, through our data. Then we want to go tell our, tell your story to our contacts. Now, if we don't have a contact with the retailer that looks like a good fit for you, then we'll dive in, we'll figure out a contact and we'll go contact them, right? But essentially, we want to make sure that we're amplifying your voice and, and taking what you guys did at the trade show and making sure that's going on year-round. The trade shows, we go to over twenty-two trade shows a year as a company. The ones that matter to California, there's probably, probably four, maybe five shows that makes ten days out of the year. The rest of the time, we're emailing, we're phone calling. We're staying on top of these guys, making sure they understand what's going on. One of my favorite stories just came up from ICSC Monterey in March. About three years ago, we entered a partnership with Clear Lake, California, up in Northern California. First, first retailer I had a meeting with was Director of Real Estate for, for Wendy's. She told me at that time, you know, we're, we're going to pass on Clear Lake. We're not going to go there. It's not a, not a fit for us. At the Monterey Show, same exact person, we're meeting with them again. All of a sudden, she lets us know they've got a new franchisee in Northern California and guess what? They're interested in Clear Lake. So had the city been talking to them three years ago, they'd take that no, probably don't ever talk to them again. But since we stay on them, we go to multiple shows, we go to multiple events, we call them and, and email them. We're able to stay on top of it and now we're, we're working towards getting that, that Wendy's in Clear Lake, right? Now, that's just Wendy's. Wendy's in some markets would, would get me fired, right? Wendy's in some markets would get me a statue, right? So wins are relative for the communities we're working with, but just, just an example of one of our wins. So we use all kinds of data, all kinds of analytics. Up here, you'll see a lot of different things, trade area identification, psychographics. So you've heard about demographics. Demographics are age, race, ethnicity. Psychographics are how people live their lives and how people spend their money. So it's one thing to have a Hispanic household, but it's another to have a Hispanic household with, with multiple breadwinners in that house or maybe five children in that house. Those types of households, while they might look the same maybe on the surface, their spending ability is much different. So we want to leverage that to understand what the types of people are made of here and what their spending ability is. Trying to think of some other, a gap analysis. So I actually ran this. I, I think I shared this at the show with, with Marissa, but your number one gap in the city right now is grocery. So twenty-one million dollars a year is leaking the city boundaries for grocery. That means that citizens are having to leave at, at a tune of twenty mil, twenty-one million dollars a year for grocery shopping. Then the second biggest is general merchandise at thirteen million. This is your Dollar Generals, your Walmarts, that, that type of retailer. And then clothing is ten million dollars a year. So just at a quick glance, those top three, those are, those are categories that my team would jump in and say, let's, how do we start filling these? What retailers match what the citizens are, are leaving for? So let's jump in here and, and talk about a custom trade area. So one of the coolest things that, that we do, it's, it's definitely creepy, but it's also cool. It's a data set that we provide. Big Brother is out there. Big Brother exists, right? But what we do is we leverage a mobile analytics study. So, so we could take, we could take any one of your retailers and, and put a polygon around it. Any cell phone that comes inside of that polygon for the past twelve months, we could trace back to their home location. Now, again, this is data that we buy. It's not, not data that we're messing with. But what we're able to do with that is we're able to figure out what your true trade area is, right? So does anybody here know the population of Kalinga, if you had to guess, city boundaries?
Just over seventeen thousand, including the prison and the state hospital.
Okay, okay. So, and, and you're not wrong necessarily. What I have and what retailers have on you is thirteen thousand one thirty-eight city boundaries. That, that probably takes out the prison and, and some of that stuff, right? That's not wrong. This is who you are. There's nothing wrong with that. But when you go to trade shows, your Ashucks, your little, your little Kalinga, right? And it's hard to get a foothold with some of these retailers. What we do is when we take and we look at one of your businesses to see where people are coming from to get to that business, we're able to establish, establish a custom trade area. So what you see on your screen here is from June twenty-one to June, uh, June of twenty-one to June of twenty, twenty-two, so the past twelve months, looking at the McDonald's. I put a trace on the McDonald's. And what you see on, on the map is the dark pink and the purple, that's where people reside that are coming to that McDonald's. So when we jump in and look at that custom trade area, you're closer to thirty thousand people, thirty thousand population. The big number that retailers really want to hear, like grocery stores, is seven point one percent projected growth by, by twenty thirty-one. Retailers, especially grocery, they bet on the come. They bet on what's coming in the future, right? And so it's great to have thirteen thousand people or a trade area of twenty-nine thousand, but it's even better to have almost ten percent more coming in the next ten years as well. So I mentioned, I mentioned some of the crazy weird data. We also do some real estate piece as well, right? So there's some more of your, your gap analysis that we talked about. Twenty-one million dollars in, in grocery, thirteen million in general merchandise, ten million in clothing, four million dollars in furniture. But the other piece that we talk about is the real estate, right? So getting to know your best real estate. You can't just put a retailer anywhere. They're like a, they're like a garden. They, or a flower in a garden. They know what soil they like. They know what sunlight they need. They know how much water they need. So that is the things like traffic counts, co-tendency, convenience, parking. When we partner with you, our team flies out. We do what's called a boots-on-the-ground analysis. We drive your entire market. We write down every site we like, whether it's dirt, whether it's a vacant building, whether it's a higher and better use case scenario. Maybe there's a vape shop where a Jimmy John should be. We note all of those things and we go back and we start calling on those property owners to build that property catalog. Essentially, what we're trying to do is figure out what are your best retail properties? Who's interested in the market? And let's put those together and let's get them here. So I mentioned trade shows. You'll actually see Marissa and, and Adam up there working hard at our booth. This was just two weeks ago, right? You guys made it into the slides. So anyone who wondered what they were doing out in Vegas, they were working extremely hard. This just happened to be a time they were sitting down in our booth. But so anyways, I think a big note for us and, and why, what separates us, another thing, Lacey Beasley, our president, is one of, one of two board members that is on ICSC's board. She was elected to be a voice of her four communities. So there's a board of eighty people for ICSC. Our company president is one of two that's on there to, to meet or to represent communities. So we go to over twenty-two trade shows a year, especially now that they're coming back. But essentially what we're trying to do, we want to stay in the middle of, of all the deal-making that goes on. So whether that's property owners, community leaders, whoever, retailers, whoever needs to be contacted, that's our job to contact them. That's our job to get their excitement here, get their interest here. Whether they're developers, brokers, retailers, property owners, we sit in the middle and we kind of represent you guys once we learn your story. That's the last slide I have. Happy to turn it over, ask if you have any questions, but thank you again for your time.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
Can you tell us again what your yearly fee is?
Yeah, it's forty-five thousand dollars a year. That's, there's no fee or commission on the backend. One thing that I think is important, we spoke at ICMA this year. Um, and there was a question that came out actually from a city manager in Delaware. And he said, I've been through a couple of different retail recruitment firms. Why are you different? And actually, one of the city managers that was on the panel said, said, you know, the no, he actually asked back, he said, well, how long have you been with each of them? He said, I gave them each a year and they weren't doing well. And so he said, what you guys need to focus on is giving a a firm like this multiple years. We're calling your property owners, we're figuring, some of your property owners aren't gonna want to sell right now. Some of them will, some of them are in LA or Fresno and they just own property out here, they don't even know they own the property. But guess what? Four D's make make real estate decisions, death, devastation, desperation, and divorce, right? We're coming out of a pandemic. So if you haven't called the owner of the the old Kmart building in a long time, we need to call them. We need to find out if if that person who is struggling to sell it, maybe they didn't make it, maybe they had a divorce. Maybe maybe their daughter owns it and she doesn't want to pay taxes on it like someone previously was, right? And so um so that's what it looks like. But we ask you guys, we want you to think about a multi-year partnership. We want you guys to be in it for the long haul with us. Um, retailers take eighteen to twenty-four months to make a decision. A retailer like Harbor Freight knows their next one hundred stores for the next three years. So they, if you're talking to Harbor Freight today, you're talking to them about a two thousand twenty-six location, right? And so the conversations start now, but you know, you gotta work through that process, you gotta nurture that process and cultivate it, so.
Now, working that way, do you have anybody that would be here? Like if you started right now, we could possibly get next year?
Well, so I mean, that would potentially, I mean, there's no guarantee.
I know that, I understand that.
So it it depends, the t- almost like the ladder that we showed, right? Like the lower tier ladder, those people are doing, you know, Dollar General's opening a a a location every twenty-four hours in the United States, right? So that's definitely a possibility. I have a lot of cities saying, we don't want dollar stores. Well, you've got a ten million dollar or thirteen million dollar leakage in general merchandise, right? So um it kind of depends on what you guys feel is a win. If the council says, we only want Topgolf, well, okay, we'll talk to them. That's gonna be a long conversation, it's gonna take many years, and maybe it's gonna be a no forever. But if you say, you know, what Marissa told me at at the show and what what excited me about the potential here was, I said, what's your goal at the show? And she said, just to bring one retailer here. And if that's the case, then then we're gonna work as hard as we can to bring one retailer here. But sometimes, you learn a lot more from a no than you do from a yes, right? And maybe it's that one site that you guys think is great, like the, I I wrote down the pad across from Burger King. It's sitting there vacant, it's got a for sale sign. Maybe there's an issue there that we don't know about, maybe we need sewage or water, maybe maybe there's something the city can overcome, right? But it all starts with conversations today. Um, so I I don't, I don't, I think if anyone came in here and guaranteed you a win in the first.
No, I I don't want to guarantee, but just.
But yeah, there's lower hanging fruit out there, absolutely.
Yeah. Is there any questions from the audience uh forum?
I just want to make a correction. I just realized on my staff report, I wrote that it was Councilman Horn's item, but it was Councilman Atkinson.
Yeah. And this is non-budgeted, right? Or was it?
No, it is not budgeted.
Okay.
And if if I could, I just, from some of the conversation earlier, I think it's important to point out that uh Lindsay, California, use ARPA dollars, pay for our services, Blythe has as well. I don't know which way you guys will go if you do decide, but there is precedent out there for.
So you can use our funds, okay? Because that question was asked today, so.
We are currently using another company, Chriscom, for something kind of like this. If we have already budgeted that to pay them, when can we cut their service?
Uh, most of our contracts have a thirty day cancellation, so I would imagine that's what it is with them. Um, I can't say for certain, it may be sixty or ninety days, um but I think it's thirty.
So could we poss- if we decide, if we were going to move forward with this, we could possibly, we're not gonna take as big of a hit because we would take some of that money that we're paying for Chriscom for what they're not doing and using it to pay.
Correct, so I believe that we would have to terminate services with Chriscom because their contract is lumped into lobbying services and economic development.
Didn't we all already just, we just did that not too long ago?
No, they they gave a presentation, but I don't think we did an updated contract.
Okay. Okay, I like what you say, I mean, really. And if, we've been uh using other other agencies and like the EDCU and all that stuff. And we really haven't got too much from them and stuff. And and we put out the money for it and everything, but um you're a little bit more than that than they are and stuff. But I don't know how much we paid on Chriscom, but uh.
Forty-five, well, approximately the same.
You know, and and I'll just add, uh, not to, not to make this go much longer, but if you, I don't know if you guys are planning to go to ICSC West Coast or the San Diego show, or if you're gonna go to Monterey, but you know, the investment you put to go to Las Vegas, you no longer have to do that. And that, I mean, you guys took nine people, that that costs a lot of money, right? And even if you take two people, it's a lot of money. So going forward, that's also cost saving if you don't want to do that. Now, if you say, hey, we still like to be out there, we want to be telling our story, that's that's great too. I'll give you a list of things to do when you're out there because you need to go talk to your McDonald's. Uh, I think it was McDonald's I saw that looked recently renovated, but it doesn't have a double drive through, why not? Like, I'd love to know that, right? So there's things that if you still want to go, there's absolutely things to do. But if you say, you know, we're paying you guys to be there, great, you're outsourcing that to us and we'll take care of it. You'll also get a recap within a week of us coming back from the show. Here's everyone we talked to, here's what they said, here's who's interested and who's not.
So that's part of it, like you you would go to McDonald's and tell them, hey, you're gonna make more money if you have a double, oh, okay.
Was it recently renovated? It looks newer, which, but that's a great sign, that's what you need to be telling retailers because if they recently renovated or in a few, last few years, that means they were doing well enough to reinvest in it, right? So that's that's a huge thing to tell retailers, other retailers. They want to know how the other QSRs are doing here. Well, hey, they're doing so good, they renovated it. And now I bet you they're trying to add a second or third drive through lane there as well.
So you would actually go to like some of the shopping centers and talk to them too and say, hey, we could get this person here, but this is as much as they normally pay and.
Absolutely, yeah.
Because I know a lot of them pay uh absorbent prices out here and stuff, so.
Yeah, I think uh Mission Viejo was a client for a while and one of the things, and it was in twenty twenty. And so one of the things they didn't know was they had like a hundred and twenty-eight property owners in their city. And it was, you know, can you start calling these guys and asking them how they're doing? You know, are their tenants doing well, are they gonna have to lose? And so that was one, one of the biggest things they got from our partnership was a a spreadsheet that was, here's every property owner, here's, you know, the fate of their their tenant right now and and, you know, and we need to start backfilling this one because there's fifteen hundred square feet about to be vacant.
And if we did this, do you come back and let us know what's going on at certain times?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, well, contractually, we put in there, I think, one, one trip a year beyond the boots-on-the-ground. But again, I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm here this week, I'll be here Ju- July fourteenth, July twenty-first. I'm presenting to different councils. My mother-in-law's in in Exeter, so I bring the grandkids out here all the time. And I don't mind, I I never would mind coming out here and just just updating council if that was ever asked as well.
Okay.
And then I think a big piece, I didn't even mention this, I have a team of five people with me as well. So you you guys would have this team, so it's not just me. I lead it because I have the California eyes, but I also have four other people uh un- uh around me, under me, however you want to say that, um, just to support you guys. We keep a five-to-one client-staff ratio so that we can get to know you guys. You could text us, say, hey, Mr. Smith is ready to sell that property, or we'll text you and say that, you know? But just want to add that, I don't want you to think it's just me here, uh, we got a great team.
Right. I like the idea of guys and.
I like the idea. Um, are we actually voting on the contract today here?
It is on for your consideration and approval.
What uh what about Fresno EDC? Do you have any idea what we pay them every year? And are they a yearly contract? I need to answer Shannon now.
It was like ten thousand a year, but I don't know if it went up or not.
I don't know, I would say that it's probably between ten and fifteen thousand a year maybe. But um they focus more on attracting industrial a little bit more than retail.
Since I've been here, I think we've had them every single year and I cannot remember one thing they've done for us. So that may be an option also to cut them out. To help pay for this as well. But uh if we move forward here, are we then making a future gen item to sever ties with Chriscom?
If that is your request.
Um, with Chriscom, it's both the lobbying and the, so we can't just sever one or the other?
That's not the way the existing contract is worded, it's all lumped together in one monthly cost. Um, I know that we had spoke before in that meeting with them and asked them about uh separating it out, but they basically said that they do economic development at no cost and the cost we pay is for lobbying. So um if we said, we only want you to do lobbying, I don't think they would decrease their monthly fee.
Okay, um, the reason why I bring that up is because they are in the middle of budget negotiations with the state right now. We're trying to get a little bit of money from the state. Um, they haven't came through for us yet. It's possible they could come through for us this time, so may want to wait a couple of months and see if they come through for us. Because if we cut them off right now, I'm sure they're not gonna keep going to the senators and assemblymen and saying, hey, Klinga needs this money. I did talk with them a couple of days ago. They are trying to get us two hundred fifty thousand dollars for law enforcement. And um we are working on the wants or the pork money, as it's often referred to, um, which should come up in the next month or two. So that is something we need to think about as well.
Yeah.
So maybe um. Yeah, somewhere around there.
I, right now, I I think I would rather just wait on both of those. Don't don't say we're gonna se- sever right now, but go ahead and take these guys on. And then we can always, I mean, she she can put, they can put money anywhere with Jasmine, you know, they can maneuver around it all legally and everything. So uh, it's not playing with money, we're just putting the money in the right spots. But uh, that's not a problem, I don't think.
Do we have the money to do that right now?
Um, so we have uh enough in our reserves. I will say that uh right now, it states that this would be funded through the general fund only because we already have our ARPA funds allocated. Um, but based on the consent calendar, you freed up about eleven thousand dollars in ARPA funds. Um, I applied for and received a small grant of five thousand dollars for the animal shelter rehab, so that reduces um the cost for that by five thousand dollars. Uh, I think we'll be successful in another grant that we're applying for for the animal shelter, although I can't say for sure. We do have a grant that we applied for for the splash pad. Um, and again, those aren't guaranteed, but we could, we could um approve it with funding it through the general fund. And then if ARPA funds become available, redirect those funds to pay for the cost of the contract.
So do we have that emo- an emotion?
I'll make the motion to approve the contract with retail strategies.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, moved and seconded to have the contract with them. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Yes.
Councilman Horn?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I vote aye too.
Thank you, thank you all, appreciate it.
So we'll get a new business next month then?
Next month, guaranteed, Trader Joe's coming.
I do a lot of text messaging, so you're gonna hear from me a lot.
Oh, good, good, we're excited about it, thank you all, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go to uh number two. Discussion direction of potential action regarding authorization and annual stipend of fifteen thousand payable to the Kalinga Area Chamber of Commerce for um fiscal year twenty-two. An adopt resolution four oh nine six authorizing um fiscal year twenty-two stipend to Kalinga Area Chamber of Commerce. Do we have to have two of them? Okay. Just it didn't make sense to me the way it said it. Okay, Marissa?
Thank you. So uh this item is on the agenda because the council previously approved a stipend of fifteen thousand dollars payable to the Kalinga Area Chamber of Commerce for fiscal year twenty twenty-two. The vote of the council was to approve the stipend with the following conditions, that a contract, or I'm sorry, uh, contract with an independent auditor to perform an assurance audit to confirm the Kalinga Area Chamber of Commerce organization is free of fraud and misuse of funds prior to the stipen- stipend being paid out. The Kalinga Area Chamber of Commerce provided copies of its twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, and twenty twenty-one tax returns to the City of Kalinga on May nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. On June sixth, twenty twenty-two, the City of Kalinga received copies of the bank statements for the Kalinga Area Chamber of Commerce for the periods of January twenty nineteen through December twenty twenty-one. The city reached out to the city's auditor regarding an assurance audit, and we have the following concerns. One is that there's not enough time to have the audit completed to pay the stipend in the current fiscal year because this current fiscal year ends June thirtieth. The audit would be costly and the auditors may or may not be able to detect any sort of fraud anyway. They couldn't guarantee that um by doing an audit. And so the auditor recommended that the city review the bank statements and tax returns to make its own determination. I've reviewed them. Um, also, I've attached them to this item so council could review them. And I didn't see anything that stood out as a reason not to issue the stipend, but they are attached for your review. And so I just need direction about uh whether or not to go ahead and pay the fifteen thousand dollar stipend. It would be my recommendation to pay it, but it takes council action.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the stipend.
Is there a second?
I don't know if I can second or not. Uh, I think I need to recuse myself from this one.
You're on their board.
Because I'm a uh board member-at-large.
You'll have to, I want you to go in the um, the question room.
Close the door too.
I'll go ahead and second it. Go ahead. It's been motioned and seconded?
I'll second that, we did a good close.
Okay, go ahead, I'm just. It's been motioned and seconded, roll call, vote please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I vote aye also. Okay. Item number three, discussion and direction item regarding development of a food truck regulatory ordinance. Sean?
Can I say something, can I say something before Sean starts?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I was gonna have you start.
Okay, so um we do have a resolution that allows food trucks in the City of Kalinga, but we need an ordinance to make it a little bit more permanent because the resolution's only good for one year at a time and we don't want to have to keep bringing it back. Um, but one of the things that's exciting about this particular item is the youth and government program that we have. Um, we interviewed a applicant who graduated from Kalinga High School and is attending UCLA and home for the summer, majoring in uh political science with a minor in urban planning. And she graduates in twenty twenty-three and she's gonna start on Wednesday as a youth and government participant here at the city. And so this is gonna be one of the assignments that Sean gives her, is working on this food truck ordinance. So I just wanted to say that before he gets started because I think that's really exciting and it just shows how great that program is. Okay, Sean?
All right, I'll be brief tonight. Um, as the council may recall, uh, we kind of started this process back in, I think, two thousand seventeen. Um, we went through some discussions with the planning commission from director and direction by the council to start looking, looking at regulations for uh food truck vendors here in the city. And which kind of, after the discussions, coming back to council at that time, led to the adoption of the resolution that permitted food trucks at the city parking lot. I think that resolution's gone through a couple iterations and now it's um sunsetting or it has sunset. And so, and you know, Marissa would like to see if the council and myself, to see if the council would like to proceed forward with developing regulations for, you know, permanent guidelines for food trucks within the cities. Um, we can provide a lot of different scenarios, different options. Um, what we'd like to do is typically we'd go through a process with the planning commission and have those discussions to really delve into it. Um, we would do additional research on different ordinances that have been drafted at different agencies. And then we could bring those recommendations back to the council for not necessarily a formal adoption, but at least get us the pro- get us the point that a council's comfortable with developing a draft ordinance. And then we can go through the text amendment process, but more of a collaborative approach. Unless the council wants to do sometime a joint session with the commission and we can have discussions amongst all of us. So Adam shaking his head no, so we may be just going through our normal process. But we can bring back some recommendations to the council um for ordinance language. And then we can go through the formal text um revisions to incorporate it into the zoning code.
Sean, have we had any complaints from our businesses about having the food trucks?
I I have not received any. I know there were some impediments of having it at the city parking lot just because of insurance requirements, some other requirements, uh, having it there on city property. having it there on city property. Um, but there are different ways that different agencies regulate, and they could be considered just food vendors, too, um, similar to anybody, any other type of food vendor. Um, but they are popular in a lot of different jurisdictions. Um, and so if it's something the council wants to continue, to want to look back into, to actual codify under our, into our municipal code, then we can definitely go down that path.
We generally have a lot of interest, too, like when we reach out to mobile food vendors for events like National Night Out. Um, it's only from five to eight, and so they want to come and they want to be here all day, or they want to be here all day and they want to be here the following day. And we don't really have that option for them. So I think that when we're looking for food vendors for chamber events, or city events, or Parks and Rec events, if they had a little bit more freedom, we'd have a lot more participation.
And one additional thing that we'll probably incorporate, because one of the challenges for food truck vendors out here, especially on the west side, is having access to a commissary for their, for, uh, for, to basically accommodate the food trucks. And so what we may look at is to make sure, because we don't really necessarily have anything in our code related to commissaries, but to incorporate land use, um, permitted uses for commissaries, to make those types of uses accessible in the city as well, so it complements the, the food trucks as well.
Okay, counsel? Any questions from the audience on this one? Okay, counsel?
I'll make a motion to move forward with this.
Okay, there's been a motion to go forward with it. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been motioned and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Horn?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Singleton?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Ramsey?
I vote aye. Thank you. Okay, next we'll go to, um, announ, announcements. Um, city manager, do you have any announcements?
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to let everybody know that National Night Out will be Tuesday, August second, downtown again, and we plan to once again hand out free school supplies. Parks and Rec is taking over the Let Freedom Ring celebration, and so that is scheduled for Saturday, July second, at the sports complex, and the city sponsoring the fireworks show.
Okay. Any council members?
Yeah, just, just for, in the area, Abanell is actually starting their farmer's markets starting this Friday at Rice Park from seven to nine o'clock. And next weekend, on Saturday, they're doing their fireworks show. So if you guys want to see two fireworks shows, they're doing it out there at their sports complex by the prison from seven until they're completely done, closed. So if you guys are interested, I don't, I don't believe there's a gate charge. Uh, I know a few years ago, I think they charged possibly three dollars, which isn't, which isn't very much. So if you guys are looking for something else to do, I would head that way.
Just a, a note, as a gentleman that was here stated that Klinga was out in Las Vegas, uh, trying to put us out there, and I think we did an excellent job for our first time showing. We had a lot of individuals curious about where we were, location in the middle, and the display was just perfect. The work that they did in preparing that was like the gentleman, it was awesome. I mean, it was our first time doing it, and I think, uh, we did a great job. I mean, it was good to see the whole city council, minus Ron, because he had other things going on, but we still know that he was there with us trying to promote Klinga. And for the vendors that were coming by, everyone was on the same page. No matter what we said, we said it the same way. It, it may came out different, but at the end of the day, we were willing to work with anybody that wanted to bring a business to Klinga, whether you want to do housing development, whatever you wanted to do, we were here to work with them. And an older gentleman had told, uh, Councilman Ramirez, uh, wasn't that the city that had that huge earthquake? And Manny, of course, was here during that time, and he said, yes, sir. He was like seven years old, or would it not? And he told the gentleman that, yeah, it wiped us out, but the way he sees it is if Mother Nature can't take us down, then we can't be taken down. And it, it kinda, I don't have any hair, but what I did have, kinda stood up. I'm like, man, I mean, it was like, that was perfect. And the gentleman was like, wow, you guys are gonna fight. And he says, yeah, we're, we're gonna fight tooth and nail for whatever we got to get you guys here. And I think that kind of summed up the whole thing, is that we weren't gonna take no for an answer. Rather they gave us cards, uh, received our cards, we weren't gonna take no. So we just hope that, uh, this does pan out, but I think we did a great job in representing the city of Klinga out there, though. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have mayor's announcements. I have none.
Sorry, can I say one more thing? I forgot, City Hall's gonna be closed on Monday in observance of the Juneteenth holiday, which is Sunday, so we're observing it Monday. I just wanted to make sure everybody knows, because there'll probably be some posts on Facebook saying, why is City Hall closed today?
Okay, uh, future agenda items? Uh, I, I basically have two.
Okay, go ahead.
If, if, just if you want. Um, I don't know if it would be an agenda item, or we'd have to go for an agenda item, but, um, Councilman Horn, he's been really busy and stuff, and we've been, uh, waiting for the In God We Trust and the, um, uh, plaque for the, uh, for the clock, for Oscar. And I'd like to get those done, and as soon as we could, so, um, and, and if not, let us know, and we could, uh, do arrangements to have somebody else do them, and, because I, I want to get that stuff done, because it, it's been almost a year now, so, on the, on the In God We Trust, so I want to get this stuff done.
I think Mary had a question about it.
Okay, Mary, I'm sorry.
Just because you're gonna be closed for the Juneteenth, it would be really astute of you guys, and I don't know if you can, but you could, as a city manager, make some sort of statement about Juneteenth to, to the public, because there's already a lot of rumbling about it, not just on our page, but all over, because this is the first time that it's been a federal holiday, and so that might be useful.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, um, okay, I'm sorry.
Um, I, I don't know if Adam has to bring that one back for the, 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 the parking to increase their, uh, for the parking at Savmar, since it's privately owned, to increase the, uh.
The semi-truck parking at Kmart?
Yes, yes. I mean, because I know he's wearing a tie, so that's like two percent he's losing.
It's ten percent.
I got him, though.
Oh, ten?
Ten percent.
I got it as a future agenda.
Yeah, you need all they can get. Uh, okay, we go to closed session, I guess, yeah. We have one item on closed session, or do we anticipate any, uh, announcements?
I'm sorry? Yes, it was on the combined to the other one.
Yeah, just closed session.
Do you think we're gonna have anything to report out?
No.
Okay, we won't have anything to report out. Uh, thanks, everybody, for coming, and this meeting is over. Thank you.